5.1, Financial Condition of the District. The Superintendent's Report.
As we're heading into December and the coming meeting of the state... Brenda, what is the... I'm trying to... It's not the Equalization Board. What is the group that meets at the state level to certify revenue for the upcoming year? I can't believe I've drawn a blank. Excuse me? The Equalization Board's at the county level. It's a meeting of the Governor, Secretary of Agriculture, the Attorney General, and the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. And that's when they look at the budget and decide whether or not... They make a couple of decisions. One, they certify whether there's going to be enough growth revenue from the previous fiscal year to trigger a tax cut, which will take place in January of 2018 if they make that decision. The other thing they do is if revenues are down, they're the ones that would start the process, that would declare a budget shortfall, a revenue shortfall, and trigger budget reductions among all state agencies. Every indication is that as we've been through now, I guess, five months of this current fiscal year, that collections continue to unperform. We're coming in below the estimate, but we're not coming in at numbers that are quite as bad as they were this time last year. Okay? So there seems to be some stabilization. So just to kind of give you an idea of where we are, so far this year, through this fiscal year, our county four-mil collection is down approximately $55,000. Gross production actual is down $231,000. We project by the end of the fiscal year, it's going to be $280,000 less. Motor vehicle continues to decrease, and so far this year, we're down $153,939. We anticipate that'll be $220,000. State school land is down 34.9. We project that to be down about $50,000 before it's all said and done. On the motor vehicle, just to kind of give you an update, you know, I've mentioned to you that... You know that we were part of a group of school districts that filed a lawsuit against the Oklahoma State Tax Commission over the way they decided to reallocate motor vehicle money last year. Last week, the Oklahoma State District Court in Oklahoma County issued a judgment. We knew that it was coming. It just took a while for all that process to take place. So they issued a judgment that found in favor of the school districts that filed the lawsuit. We now... That now starts a clock, and I believe that the Oklahoma Tax Commission now has 30 days to file an appeal if they desire to do so. So probably sometime the 1st of January, we'll know whether the Oklahoma Tax Commission is going to accept the ruling of the District Court Judge in Oklahoma County or whether they're going to appeal the decision. And again, we'll just have to wait and see how that plays out. You may remember that last year, as a part of the budget process, the state made some cuts in some state funding. They cut the textbook allocation, which for us is $223,000 a year. They made a cut in A-Street mediation. They cut professional development. They cut alternative ed. And then they turned around and restored a little bit of funding. They restored some money to professional development from 2016. And then they also restored $116,000 in state aid that was cut last year because of the budget cut. So when you take all those numbers and you look at what we lost in state aid and what we've lost so far this year, we estimate that we're going to see a $1,274,862 decrease in net revenue. Now, we did take some steps last year to help us absorb these cuts. And as a result of those cuts, in reduction in payroll and then instructional budget cuts, we estimate that our projected savings is $900,000. So we have a net loss of $533,000. Is that correct, Brenda? Am I doing... Is my math right?
About $400,000.
About $400,000. So when it's all said and done, we believe that we're going to spend $400,000 of our fund balance this year. So what does that mean? It means that we project that we're going to have a fund balance of $3.2 million, which is somewhere between 8% and 9% of a fund balance. So we believe we're solid for the rest of this fiscal year, that we'll have enough of a fund balance that obviously we'll be able to operate for this year. Well, not knowing what the legislature is going to do, if we end up that we have additional budget cuts, we'll have to come back and we'll have to look at things, some other ways that we might possibly reduce expenditures. Obviously, we're hopeful that the rhetoric that we hear coming out of the legislature, that there's a commitment at the state level to do some things to raise teacher salaries and those kinds of things may generate some additional revenue for school districts so that not necessarily that when it's all said and done, we'll have an increase in revenue, but maybe we won't have a decrease again so that we'll be able to basically have a standstill budget as we head into next year. I get lots of questions all the time about whether or not I think the legislature will do a teacher pay raise or not. And my answer to that is I'm not... I don't know. I think there's obviously more discussion about that than at any time that I can remember in my career as an educator. But there has yet to be anybody that has... Well, we did have a member of the legislature that submitted a bill that has filed a piece of legislation that would raise the income tax on people with an income of $100,000 or more that would be enough to fund a $300 million increase in education funding, which would pay for a $5,000 pay raise for all teachers. I'm not sure that has a lot... much of a chance. But at least somebody is having a conversation about revenue because the issue... I mean, we have several things at play here. First of all, we're not keeping track with what our neighboring states pay their teachers. Our education funding has not just been stagnant, it's been reduced. Our expenditures continue to go up. In addition to the teachers not having a pay raise, we haven't... Our support personnel haven't had a pay raise in a number of years. And so that means that we don't compete with other business industry in Oklahoma for secretarial staff, for teacher assistants, for teacher aides, for custodians, those individuals. So I'm not sure at what point we determine that we're at a crisis, enough of a crisis, that we have a serious discussion about revenue. But I personally don't see a plan that provides additional funding for our schools without a new revenue source. And I know there's lots of discussion about ending some tax credits. The wind farm people seem to be the biggest target out there right now. But, you know, again, I'm not sure that ending a wind farm credit that would expire in 2025 does us a lot of good right now. So I won't say that I do not think a pay raise will happen. What I will tell you is I'm less... I would say 60/40. 60% it doesn't, 40% it does. But at the end of the day, as much as we need to pay teacher pay raises, and we definitely need one, we also need funding that will help us hire back the teachers that we've reduced. And we need to have money to give support personnel a raise. So we've got lots of needs. And I think we have lots of people interested in talking about it. I don't know how serious anybody is about a solution. So that's my update.
Quick question. Isn't the potential motor vehicle tax offset about the same amount as we're down the $400,000? If we get it?
If we get it, yes. It would restore... Depending on how that works, Robin, and how they run that back through the formula, I think it has the potential to fill that hole. There would have been a loss of revenue in motor vehicle anyway because the state is collecting less motor vehicle money than it did the previous... In 2015, '16, they collected less motor vehicle revenue than they did in 14, '15. So there should have been a reduction in motor vehicle revenue. It should have been spread among all of the districts in the state instead of a few of us taking the majority of that hit. We shouldn't have had a situation where some districts collect enough money in motor vehicle revenue and get enough of an increase in motor vehicle revenue that they don't see any reduction in their budget with the state aid cuts. So... But yeah, it'll help. Anybody have anything else for me? Okay. Number six, the consent calendar.
Do I have a motion to approve the... Or not approve the consent calendar?
We talked about it in the Finance Committee. I'll move to approve it.
Are there any questions on any of these three items? Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Okay, number seven. Consideration of and vote to approve or not approve the following district financial reports.
Make a motion for approved, 7.1. Second.
Any questions on any of these items? Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
7.2, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve ratification of the AIA contract to employee construction manager, Sooner Construction Company, for projects from the 2015 bond issue.
Motion to approve, 7.2.
I've got a couple pictures just because we're on the subject of Sooner Construction and the Concert Hall. Last month, you got a presentation from Troy Lewis showing the outside of the Concert Hall. This time, I just kind of want to show you just some pictures of the inside. There's some that are on your dais here. I thought the audience probably want to see a couple of them, too. We want to make sure that you all saw. This is kind of a cutout view. To just look at the 3D cutout of this Concert Hall, their program, if they call Revit, is just phenomenal. It just does all kinds of things. Once they start clicking on it, it shows the HVAC. It shows the electrical. It shows the ductwork. And it's just kind of an all-encompassing thing once they... We got that out there. So a cutout view. Yes, sir.
Which direction is east? To the right?
To the right. To the... No, to the left, excuse me. Where am I at? It's to the right. Correct. It's to the right. Yeah, this far side over here is north. That's the lobby.
No, the other way.
That's north.
To your left is north.
I believe it's south. I believe it's south.
The three tiers are facing the high school, correct?
Yes.
Yes, correct.
So that'll be the north. Behind the three... The three-tiered.
That's correct.
Because that's... Elevators in the center of the building.
So the wall that's not cut away is east?
No.
No, that would be the west wall that's cut away.
The west wall.
Yeah, the west wall's gone.
Okay, well, that's what I asked. Okay.
That's correct.
Oh, yeah.
So everybody's facing south?
Yep.
More or less.
All right.
Platform.
And this right here is some more cutaways. This is so you can see what it looks like when you're in the balcony. This kind of shows you the sightlines whenever you're sitting up there. So it gives you a nice view of that stage. This is the front lobby. We don't have all these things in colors yet, so it's just black and white out of the Revit program. So a nice-sized lobby area full of glass. That's going to go... Look right out that glass, you're going to be able to see the high school and then the upper balcony there on the left. Another one setting back up in that top tier, the second tier, not the third tier. Looking back at the stage. And that one is from the third tier. The technical level, that's the one that we added. So nice sightlines from wherever you are. And one more. Kind of a color view. If I could make it look a little bit better, make it larger. Even put some people in so you can kind of see how big this thing really is. And you can't see it because it's... Just the color's not good on this. But those curtains are... Right now, they're Ponca Blue. That's what we've got them colored here. It makes them dark. They can open those up partially or fully. Kind of tunes the sound in the building. And then we got the seats. And then another view from back in those seats looking towards the stage. So that thing right over the stage is called a reflector. That's going to help reflect some of that sound back out to the audience along with the stage and all those other things. So that's pretty much it. Just wanted to give you a quick look from the inside.
Okay. We've had... We have been... You've had a motion and seconded. Now we need to go. Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Okay, 7.3, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve ratification of the AIA contract to employ construction manager, Rick Scott Construction Company, for projects from the 2015 bond issue.
Motion to approve, 7.3.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Okay, 7.4, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve agreement for PEC Professional Engineering Consultants to provide professional services for synthetic turf and drainage system installation at the Ponca City High School and West Middle School for a total cost of $27,750. Do I have a motion for the turf?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Who's that company, Brett?
PEC Professional Engineering Consultants. They're the same engineering group that we use for all of our projects through Troy Lewis.
I see Troy.
Yeah. It's a good group. We... They did this kind of stuff, too. So I just asked them for a quote to do this for the turf. We have to pre-engineer it before we can put it out for bid to install the turf. They figure that part out for us.
So for on the baseball diamond and softball field, we won't have to pay the architectural fee? This is in lieu of?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
7.5, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve accepting the bids for the Robinson Fieldhouse Interior Renovation Project.
Can you explain that scaffolding now that you changed that? It went from real high to...
It went from real high to real high.
Oh, it did? Okay, it didn't go down?
[laughing] We didn't get a bid because we didn't have any idea what it was going to cost. And so we got another company. Rick Scott Construction got another company, and it was somewhere in the $400,000 range. They're not sure exactly where it's going to land. So she threw... She put the highest bid out of the two companies that do this. And there's more companies that do it. She got two companies in the state. So she put the highest one in there, which is $499,000, to do scaffolding. And that is an initial setup fee. It's a takedown fee. But then there's a monthly fee that goes along with it. That's why it's so high. So hedging her bets on the highest one, highest bid of the two, just to make sure it comes in.
That's just... Okay.
Does that make sense?
But they're going to go out and get more people besides those two.
We are putting it out for bid. That is correct. This is just her estimate. But, well, that can... Her GMP will include that. But if it comes in less, that also comes down... Also comes off the GMP.
So the GMP includes the $499?
Yes. That's worst-case scenario. It can always go down, but it won't go up.
And so we can probably estimate it'll come down 100?
The possibility's there.
The two bids that... Or I should say the quotes that I asked. We're for... From companies that... They're both from out of town that came here and met with us on site and took all the measurements and went back and engineered their own, what it would take to scaffold that to be able to work safely and reach all of the areas. The other one was about $100,000 less. And then there are two other companies in the state that are reputable companies that do this work that have stayed with us. We have issued that bid package. And it should have been in December 8th and December 15th. Papers last week and this week to receive bids, I believe, on the 21st. I think the last day you guys were in session.
Motion to approve.
Does it reduce a lot because of the chairs or something? Will it be changed or something?
No, we found out it doesn't really reduce it enough because they're negotiating in between the chairs anyway. So it didn't matter. I talked to Don about it a little bit.
Okay. I guess... I guess, I don't know. What are we... What is... What are we bidding?
You're bidding on the bids for Robinson Fieldhouse.
For Robinson, to do whatever we're going to do to Robinson. And the scaffolding's going to cost almost $500,000 to put it up?
That's right.
Worst-case scenario. The reason for that GMP is because...
It seems like a lot of money.
There's no way to access.
Right, okay.
And the elevation inside Robinson from the floor is about 35 feet straight up. And if you... The cross elevation for that, to be able to reach it, is in the 40 to 45 range. There's not a piece of equipment that we can actually fit inside Robinson anywhere. There's no door that allows access for a piece of equipment that big. Even if we could get it in that way, there's no... The tunnels aren't big enough to be able to drive the equipment in. And the floor is not strong enough to be able to sustain the weight without collapsing the floor that we're not replacing now. So it's a nature of the beast. The best way to reduce that price is to have the competitive bids that we have and also to get the work done as quickly as possible because part of the cost is based on the months that they have to rent that out.
Okay. So the scaffolding's going to be there for everybody else to do the work they need to do?
Right. Which is partly why the total project of Robinson came in $200,000 less than what we had anticipated. So our budget originally was $1.99 million. And the GMP that we're asking is for $1.79. And so the cost of the scaffolding, while I know it looks really scary and ridiculous, if you look back at our budget numbers for all of the other scopes of work, if you allocate that 500 evenly through all the rest of them, it distributes out and would be more equal. So like, our HVAC bid was about half of what we had budgeted for, largely because they had included scaffolding and equipment rental and everything else, so...
So you said that we weren't going to replace the floor?
No, ma'am.
We're not going to replace the floor?
No. We're just sanding it and changing some of the staining and some of the graphics on the floor.
Okay.
But that's because, Judy, we did a test on the floor and we...
Correct.
And it's good.
Yeah, we cut a hole in the floor, and there's barely any of the floor gone.
Okay.
So you've got two bids, and you've got two more to bid?
So before I was even comfortable asking for a GMP, I called two professional companies that were recommended in our industry and asked them to come down and quote it for us so I would even know what I was talking about. And then there are two other companies in the state of Oklahoma that are very professional, reputable scaffold builders that scaffold places like the Devon Tower, that scaffold the Capitol, that scaffold... There's some places down at Oklahoma State University. And that's all they do for a living. It's a very hazardous job, very risk... High risk involved with the... They have to engineer it and build it so that it's safe for other people to work off of and also for their workers as well. So in total, I'm hoping for four bids when we receive them on the 21st.
What's the difference between the top two that you've already got?
What do you mean? We can't legally accept them. They have to abide by Title 61. We have to do the 21-day.
What is the difference?
What do you mean? Price?
Yeah.
That's all.
You don't know the difference?
What do you mean?
They've already came in with two bids.
No, those are just quotes.
Those are quotes.
They're only quotes. So you gotta remember, we might only get one bid.
What's the range between them?
$100,000? Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But you gotta... We gotta be... Hopefully, something comes up, these other guys might say, "No, we're not going to mess with this bid. We got a bigger one in somewhere in the city." We might end up one bid.
Right.
And we're stuck. Or we might end up with 15.
Right. It's not a small... It's not a small project. And we anticipated to generate some interest, but because of the dollar value, we had to competitively bid it.
That's starting as soon as basketball wrestling's over?
Or before.
Or before.
Or before, right?
It'll take them about a month to set it up and a month to take it down, which really, really compresses the six-month schedule that we have allotted into a four-month schedule. And after that comes down, the flooring obviously can't start until after it comes down. And if we're bound by the 9/1 2017 completion date, down, and if we're bound by the 9-1, 2017 completion date, that really gives me anxiety.
Okay.
Okay. Don made a motion, but we need a second.
I second it.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
7.6, consideration of and vote to, and vote to approve or not approve accepting the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, of $1,794,693, for the Robinson Fieldhouse interior renovation project.
Move to approve. Second.
How much did we, did we do on the bond, do you remember?
1.9.
1.9?
Something, a couple hundred thousand above that.
Okay.
And then we're still going to be possibly another 100,000 in scaffolding.
Cheaper.
So we'll be 300,000 below budget.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Okay, 7.7, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve accepting the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, of $1,699,363.77, for the Sullins Press Box project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions?
Stephanie, do you estimate much in the savings on these last four bids, that are being rebid, the four items?
Not a whole lot, I don't. The wall panels and the drywall, probably not a whole bunch. The best potential for savings is in the glass, and in the, the stadium, the stairs, and the hand railings, I, I would anticipate some savings there. I don't remember how much they had. I believe the values that we have in here are only, are less than 10% of what we had budgeted in the first place, so I don't, I don't anticipate much more than, than a 10% savings over the 20, 20,000.
Okay.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mr. Clark?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye. 7.8, consideration of and vote to approve or not approve accepting the purchase agreement with ADL Group LLC, DBA, Oklahoma LED, for $1,416,264.78, to re, to retrofit LED lights in the entire district. I guess every...
How long's that take, how long's that take to get that in, Brett? When are they doing it, and how long?
They'll do it, they'll, they'll want to start in February, about February 1, and it'll take them about two months.
Okay.
They're going to come in with 30 or 40 electricians, and they're going to work off-hours and weekends, and get it done really quickly. They do this all over the state.
Are they having to put in new light fixtures, or just light bulbs?
No, they're putting in fixtures.
Fixtures.
And/or retrofitting existing fixtures, so like, they'll take this lens right out of here, and they'll put in another piece of metal that holds a, a deflector, and then it cut loose the ballast that's in it, and then put LED strips in it, so you won't see them, but you'll see a different light.
That's every facility on...
Except the Fieldhouse. Except the lights?
The light bulb, this too.
Field light.
Yes, this too.
This too.
Yes.
Is there an estimated annual electrical savings once the system?
Yes. That is about $300,000.
Per year, or total?
Per year.
Per year? For seven years?
Yes.
No. $300,000 savings will be forever.
Yeah, that's forever.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, we're going to save $10 million in 10 years, you know, it's, you know, seven years is for the lease purchase, which is what you're voting on, and then after seven years, we get all the savings.
How long do they last?
15 to 20 years. And you, they can last longer. There's a, a little generator that's involved in it, it's not a ballast, that might go out later, sooner than the 15 or 20 years. That's cheap and easy to do, but the lights will last 15, 20 years, 30 years, you know, however they're engineered.
Brett, I think that's one of the great lies of the 21st century.
They can do, it's like, so you're talking about planned obsolescence?
I'm telling you, I think it's one of the great lies of the 21st century.
Judy, I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Dr. Pennington, Brett and I have probably vetted this project more than any that I've talked about since I've been on the board. As you're aware, the AMA has come out against this type project for outdoor lights, and we have turned the internet upside down trying to find whether we should or should not do this because of safety issues inside. And unless you guys have come up with something this afternoon, I can't find any reason not to do it, even though the AMA says, don't do it outside. And I think it has to do with the background of the dark nightlights. There's been several cities around the, the country that have put these in and had to go back and take them out, this type.
What did it do to them? I mean, why, why did they have to take them out?
Health concerns.
Answer.
The AMA has said, be real careful doing it outside, the volume of the lights, and without getting into a lot of details, but we can't find anything that says you shouldn't do this inside, so, I mean, for the record, I've actually tried to find why we don't want to do this, and I cannot find it.
Okay, so we're just doing it inside?
Yeah.
Or doing it outside, too?
Yeah.
Okay.
They took it out in these other places because of some complaints with the, because they thought it was too harsh. But it's streetlights only, they're not talking about parking lot lights, but streetlights only, but it still has a whole lot to do with the black, it's the blue light that they're wor, they're worried about, because it came out several years prior to that, that the blue light affects sleep patterns. So people that are on their phone at night, or doing computers at night, they can't sleep, their brain doesn't shut down for them to have a good night's sleep, that's the primary reason for the study in the beginning with. But the blue light is, in daylight, existing lights we have now, these fluorescents, they're worse for you than the LED lights. I can find lots of stuff that'll tell you that.
Motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Who seconded it?
Aye.
Robin?[1628.62]